...of November 21, 2017. I am Desmond Blackburn, Superintendent of Schools. This is the organizational portion of tonight's meeting and it is my privilege to chair the school board meeting until such time as a chairperson is elected for the coming This evening, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations. I'm sorry, before that, Mr. Reed. I'm not accustomed to this whole chairperson thing. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
This evening, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the organization of the board. First, we need to elect a chairperson for this coming year, at which time the person elected will assume the responsibility as the chair. The chairperson will then elect other officers and appoint individuals to committees where board representation is required or expected in various organizations across the county and in the state. Before we begin, I have asked Amy Enval, General Counsel, to explain this process. Ms. Enval?
Thank you. Board members, we follow Robert's Rules of Order and pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order for the election of the chairperson of the board. The presiding official will be the superintendent who will call for nominations. Any board member who wishes to make a nomination should call out. The first person to call out will be number one to make a nomination. I will tell the superintendent who is the first nominator, so don't go yet. He will then call for the nomination by that person and go down to the second and then the third. We'll go back to the first person, the first nomination, and vote on that nominee. The nominee that gets the majority vote, three votes, will be the chairperson. If that person is the first nominee, then that will end the process. If the first nominee does not get three votes, we will go to the second and so forth. The nominations do not need to be seconded under Robert's rules. I would be happy to answer any questions before we get started. Okay?
Mrs. Enval will observe and inform me which board member makes the first nomination as I may have trouble distinguishing simultaneous voices. Why are we laughing? Cut it out. The floor is now open to nominations for a chairperson.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Ziegler?
Nominate John Craig.
Is this something you can have discussion on?
Well, we're going to go in order first. So, we're going to take nominations first. So, Mr. Ziegler nominated John Craig.
As always, I have something to say. The process is strange. For those of you that don't know, we can't discuss this beforehand at all, so I have no idea if Mr. Craig wants to be chair and if it's expected. And so, we'd love to ask that right now or do we have to...
Well, let's go through first and take any other nominations that there may be.
Wow. Ms. Belford has done such a great job that if John was not interested, I was going to nominate Ms. Belford, but if, I mean, John would be a great chair too. That's all.
So, do you, would you like to nominate Ms. Belford?
Not till I know what Mr. Craig thinks.
Okay. All right. We could do it that way, too.
So, John can't speak until after we've nominated everybody?
Well, we should...
He's not sure if he really wants to, so I'll nominate Misty, just in the event that John doesn't...
Okay.
Okay, so we're safe now.
Yes. So, let's take nominations first.
Done.
Anybody else? All right, Superintendent, it's up to you.
Can I have a motion for nominations to be closed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of nominations being closed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations have been closed. So, who do I call first?
So, we have more than one nomination now.
All this laughing is really problematic, folks.
Robert's Rules is as clear as mud sometimes. We have more than one nomination now, so you can call for a vote in favor of nomination one if you'd like.
Can we discuss?
Yes.
You may discuss, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the nominees.
Oh, I don't think we need a motion.
You don't really need a second, you can just discuss.
Oh, my gosh.
They can now discuss.
Yes, you can now discuss.
You all can discuss.
Mr. Craig, why would you like to be chair?
Are you willing, able, excited, and energized to be our fearless leader?
I am thrilled that you even would consider me as a qualified candidate. I will say that I think Ms. Belford has done an incredible job and I don't think that there's ever a reason to just go to someone else for another reason. I am happy to do it and I will give it 110%, but I also know that we have a really, really good thing going right now as well. And I think we certainly wouldn't go, wouldn't go wrong if we, if Misty continued to be the, be the chair. She has led us steadfastly and courageously at times, and I know it's taken a lot of her personal time, so I respect her opinion probably most of all as to, you know, what she would like to do because truly it's, it's an honor to even, you know, serve with her as her vice chair this last year.
In the spirit of all of this, Mr. Craig, could you tell me what some of the things is that you would really like to see happen next year so they could get excited? In particular to STEM and career and technical.
He's lobbying for your vote.
We will continue on the strategic path that the superintendent has laid out for us and that this board has adhered to and voted to approve, making that this district is the best in Florida.
I'd agree with you there. Ms. Belford, could you tell us what your platform would be in the event?
I'm so not used to using these microphones. Is that on?
It's just out of control.
Okay, I'm on now. Okay. So, like Mr. Craig, I think that we have done a great job as a team laying out our strategic objectives moving forward and so I feel like that most certainly is where we should continue to focus refining and improving upon those efforts that we currently have in place. So, and to Mr. Craig and Ms. Deskovich, I would say thank you for the vote of confidence and the gracious words. I am happy to continue as chair if that is the wish of the team. If you all would like to see a change, I absolutely respect that and I think that we couldn't ask for better than Mr. Craig, so I think it's pretty much up to you guys.
I might as well throw in, Misty has done a fantastic job as chair. It's been a great year. Of course, we've got a great board, so everything works well. John's been a great school board member. I just personally feel that we all should take turns at various positions and that the responsibility should rotate. So, my two cents.
I can tell you this, it does not hurt my feelings if Misty is the chair. She is a phenomenal person.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yes.
Pick one of the two to...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to start with number one.
Start with number one. All members of the board, in support of Mr. John Craig's nomination as chairperson of the board, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Now, is John a vote for himself? Can you vote for yourself?
If he would like to vote for himself, I believe he can vote for himself.
I think accepting is a vote for yourself.
I'm confused.
Well, you're a voting member, even voting for yourself on this, on this...
You could have nominated yourself as well.
Yeah, if you're accepted, so...
That's true.
You don't have to vote for yourself, but then you would, but then you wouldn't accept nomination if you did.
Well, how many ayes do we have?
You're the third.
I purposely put you on the spot.
So, you're not going to vote for yourself?
Yeah, that would be denouncing, rejecting the nomination.
Yeah.
You have to if you're going to accept the nomination.
I see what you mean. Yeah, that makes sense. You're not voting for John?
I'm just waiting for John to vote for himself.
Oh, he has to vote.
That's what it is.
You're putting pressure on him?
Because he's so modest, he won't do it.
Right, exactly.
That's why I'm trying to force him to do it. It's part of... It's the only time I can get to John.
Oh, just...
Remember, he's the chair.
Don't make it necessary.
I'll say nay. I think Misty would be excellent.
Well, that all depends on how I'm asking of him.
I'll vote for John. That'll be good. That's it.
Yep, so that's three.
But you want to support yourself?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
All right. That settles it. John's chair.
Is that it, Ms. Enval?
Well, now you need a motion for nominations to be closed.
We already did that.
Do we do that? Wait a second. Yeah, okay.
We close nominations.
Then we voted and now...
Okay, okay. So, so we're, okay. So, now we need to go, the new chairperson is going to take over.
So, congratulations, Mr. John Craig.
New chair.
Chairperson. As my last and final duty as board chair, I will call a short recess to have the technology reconfigured to accommodate the needs of the new chairperson. Thank you.
Now, he's going to do the meeting. He's going to...
And welcome back. At this time, I will open the floor to nominations for vice chairperson.
I'm watching.
The crowd is...
This one's going to be interesting. I'll nominate Tina. Are there any more nominations for vice chairperson? We do need a motion for nominations to be closed.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members of the board, in support of Tina Deskovich's nomination as vice chairperson of the board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Deskovich. New business, new business card for you.
Due to this time-certain meeting of the Leasing Corporation, it would be appropriate to call a recess at this time.
Okay. Make sure you're back at six.
We will stand in recess for six minutes until the Leasing Corporation meeting at 6:00 PM in recess. And we are back. Thank you all for your patience. We do have a special time-certain annual meeting for the Leasing Corporation and at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Blackburn.
Yes, sir. Chairman Craig, this is a required annual meeting of the Brevard County School Board Leasing Corporation. Before we proceed, I would like to ask Penny Zirker, Chief Financial Officer, to provide a quick overview and explanation of the Brevard County School District Leasing Corporation. Mrs. Zirker?
Good evening, Board Chairman Craig, board members, and Dr. Blackburn. The Brevard County School Board Leasing Corporation is a Florida not-for-profit corporation formed solely for the purpose of facilitating financings by the school board of Brevard County, Florida, that are payable in part from the school board's 1.5 mil capital outlay millage, which constitutes ad lorum taxes. The corporation serves no purpose other than to facilitate the long-term certificate of participation financings. The corporation is a nonprofit corporation formed pursuant to Section 1001.453 of the Florida statutes. The members of the corporation are the members of the school board. The chair of the school board serves as the chair of the board of directors and president of the corporation. The vice chair of the school board serves as the vice chair of the board of directors and vice president of the corporation. The superintendent of schools serves as ex officio secretary and the chief financial officer serves as ex officio treasurer. Therefore, when the school board is restructured, the corporation should be restructured in light manner.
Thank you, Mrs. Zirker. There is one item of business on this evening's agenda, the election of officers. Item one is to recommend that the following officers be elected to the Brevard County School Board Leasing Corporation board. President, Mr. John Craig, chairperson. Vice President, Mrs. Tina Deskovich, vice chairperson. Secretary, myself, Desmond Blackburn. And Treasurer, Penny Zirker, our CFO.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Please vote and it's a voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. And if there is, is there any more business to come before the Leasing Corporation board? Leasing Corporation board meeting is now adjourned and we will continue with the regular scheduled board meeting. The next item on the agenda is to designate the date, time, and place of regular and special monthly meetings with exceptions. Dr. Blackburn?
It is my recommendation for the board to adopt the dates, times, and places for these meetings as listed on the attached meeting date schedule.
What are the wishes of the board? Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. I'm curious if anybody has any foreseen conflicts. I particularly have a conflict on February 13th. If nobody has a conflict, then that's not a problem, but I figured I'd throw it out there. No, then I may miss my first meeting in over nine years.
Can we move it?
No, it's, I might be able to phone in. We haven't done that in a while either. We can certainly phone in.
Phone a friend?
Let's not, let's not change it just for that. Others, is there any more discussion?
No.
Then please vote. And the motion passes five zero. Next, we need to appoint board representatives to various committees for the upcoming year and stand by one. We have several. We're up to 15 now, I believe, and obviously we have the same members of the board and so if you would like to continue on in your position, please make that noted. Also, if there's something that really interests you that somebody else has had, please give us that as well, but otherwise, we'll step through them pretty quickly. First is League of Cities, presently, Mr. Susan. Okay, continue there. Brevard County Values Adjustment Board, Ms. Deskovich?
I'll keep it.
Thank you. Professional Development Council, Ms. Deskovich?
I'll keep it unless somebody else wants it. I haven't been the best professional development council member, so I... So I will do better if I keep it, but if someone else wanted to jump in there, I would understand. The only role they've asked me to do is to attend some of their leadership meetings that they have in the evening for developing leadership. But they always, I just have a ton of conflicts usually, so I don't attend. But it's the only, you can always attend that just as not being the representative too. Right.
Do we want to add you as a, as an alternate? Okay, and then we'll keep that the same. Sorry. Ms. Belford?
No, I was just going to make a comment that as we go through these, it may be good, especially if the appointee is unable to attend, it may be good just to send out a shout out to the rest of the team and say, hey, I can't make this. Can anybody be there? Because I'm, I'm sure that we all have conflicts with our various committees.
Absolutely, that's a great point. And as, as we have alternates in some categories and some we don't, remember that we can, we, we serve everybody so, or serve the entire county, so we are all really alternates and should treat it as such. Federal Relations Subcommittee is myself. I can stay on that unless somebody else really wants to take it. Brevard Culture Alliance, again, Mr. Susan. Excellent. Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition, Mr. Ziegler, and I am the alternate. Mr. Ziegler, did you want to continue on?
Seeing as I'm still the Chair, it'd probably be a good idea.
Probably be a good idea to do so, but we just want to make sure you weren't advocating the.
Maybe next year.
Coalition. Brevard Schools Foundation, I've been on that for a couple of years. It's a great organization. I'm more than willing to let anybody else take it, or I can stay on it if anybody's interested. All right, I will stay on as Brevard Schools Foundation. Mr. Susan, you are still the alternate. Head Start Committee, Mr. Susan. Okay. FSBA Legislative Liaison, Ms. Belford.
I'm good.
Thank you. And FSBA Board of Directors, Mr. Ziegler.
I'm good.
You want to stay there?
Unless somebody else wants it.
Does anybody else want that? Choice and Charter School Liaison, Ms. Belford.
I'm good.
Excellent. And School Age Child Care Committee, Mr. Susan. Thumbs up. Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Mr. Ziegler.
I'll stay on that. I want to clarify which one.
It's the Insurance Advisory.
The Insurance Advisory.
It should be the Insurance Advisory.
I just want, I want that to be clarified.
It's the Insurance Advisory.
Right, it's the SIAC.
Correct, and you will stay on that. Capital Outlay Committee, Mr. Susan. Glad to hear it's your favorite. FSBA Advocacy Subcommittee, Ms. Belford.
I'm good.
Excellent. Thank you all for your consideration and for your time to all those different committees. And that brings us to Board Authorization. Dr. Blackburn.
It is a requirement to authorize the Superintendent to have signature facsimiles made of the Chairperson and Superintendent to be used for signing checks and also to approve the continued use of the current signature facsimiles for district checks until new facsimiles are received. A motion and vote of the Board is required for this issue.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes five zero. This time, carrying on tradition, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize any staff, students, or community members either present or that you would like to mention. And we can start at one end. Mr. Susan, how about we start with you?
Well, okay, so I had the, the honor of hosting what technically would be the official first industry board for construction, career, and technical programs, where 186 contractors represented by ABC and HBCA, along with our four high schools, Janice Schultz, Jeff Arnott, and everybody were together in one room. Set direction not only for internships for the summer, but for Palm Bay to be sponsored by Certified Construction and that MH Williams will take, or Coastal Mechanical will take Melbourne. And it just literally linked up everything inside of our schools, programs, and construction during the day to have the mentorships, the internships. But then also Jeff Arnott brought on ABC, which is the apprenticeship evening programs for ABC, which is the private side, and is very close to signing the trades unions from the plumbers, the pipe fitters, and everybody else. So literally by the summer, we will have, in effect, every single trade apprenticeship working through our GED and night school. We will have over 300 kids in internships that are paid through federal dollars in construction. Along with every one of our four schools will be sponsored with mentorships and major construction programs. It was one of the greatest things to see, and I was so proud of the leadership of Janice Schultz and the four schools and Jeff Arnott, because they're just doing great things along with our major organizations. The other thing that happened was on Friday, we had the Innovation Games, which was at Northrop Grumman, the organizational piece for the Innovation Games. And we had over sixty schools, along with the Sea Perch Program from the Navy Research. We had FIT there. We had members from the drone company that were using for all of the drones to fly. And basically, I had teachers that came up to me and said that they have for years been waiting for this program. The one lady from West Shores Robotics was sitting there crying, and she said, I've never been more proud of an organi- a, a program that they've had in the school system because she's been trying to do robotics and it's been so costly. For those of you guys that don't know what the program is, is it's the Innovation Games, which we're going to have in March at the Air Show. Ms. Archer's been putting it together along with myself and a couple of other individuals, but it's going to give the opportunity for not only First Robotics, Ex Robotics, Drone Races, Drone Innovation, everybody at the airport. And normally, we bus kids to go there to take a look at some of the stuff that's going on. We're actually going to be there competing with seventeen other school districts in what has become the Innovation Games. It's one of the most prolific innovation things you've ever seen. Ms. Archer's in charge of it, and she's just knocked it out of the park. And I couldn't be more proud of the, the situation that occurred in Northrop Grumman. I did want to say, welcome manatee, because you guys are from my district. Amazing school, we all know. And I said before, Carl Brown kicked me out of there. It's my first experience there. My wife was a former teacher there. You guys, just an amazing thing. And I know Mr. Brown's hand is actually inside the concrete of the building that he started and has been teaching there for fifteen years. So I know that all the individuals there, you've inspired and led, and I just want to say congratulations for being here. Thank you so much. You do a great job. I also wanted to say thanks to the Edgewood families, because half of my Viera kids end up in your place. So you guys are awesome over there. Nothing but great things come out of that school. You guys drive the leadership in our county and the scores and everything else, and I really appreciate what you guys do over there. Thank you for being here and thank you for being, doing the great things over there at Edgewood that you guys do. And I also wanted to say hi to Mr. Whitterman in the back from our attorneys. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I also wanted to say, Evan Ernest from Who We Play For over here, this man goes ahead and he tests kids for EKGs prior to them playing sports, so that we can make sure that they don't have any heart murmurs and they don't end up having a heart attack and dying on our fields. He does this as a not-for-profit, one of the most prolific programs. He gives his heart and soul to this after he lost one of his friends in Cocoa Beach. So that's an amazing program, and thank you so much for being a part of our, our, our school system. I wanted to say thank you to the SEMAs for showing up tonight, for the CPR that we've got later on. And I just want to say hi to Giles Malone for great, offering us a great opportunity through the Space Coast Fair. Presented a check this week that's going to go, as we board directed, into special funds projects, so that we could later use those towards possibly working towards playground equipment or whatever it was. Mr. Giles, how much was that check for? Twenty-one thousand dollars for having that there. And that along, that didn't include the money that went to the not-for-profits also, right? Which was, those checks were for how much, sir? Another nine thousand going to the Brevard School. So thank you so much for doing that. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I think that, I pretty much don't have anybody else in the fans. Oh, thank you for the union for being here, and anybody else that's in the stands. Thank you very much. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Susan, I think that'll take care of.
Wait, John Minkle from Norton, from Sierra Nevada, right there. One of the directors out there that's got an amazing STEM program that he wants to bring, and he'll talk about during public comment. Thank you so much for being here. Sorry, I was going to put you on the last but not least.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Deskovich, I know it's a lot to follow, but would you please?
I know, I don't think I can top that energy or excitement, but I will try. A huge thank you to Cocoa High School. Ms. Austin's class in particular, she, at our last school board meeting, challenged one of the school board members to come and sub in her classroom for a day, and I accepted her challenge. And I went up to Cocoa High School and spent, spent the day teaching economics, which I'm not particularly good in, and American history, which I am pretty good in. Oh, no, American government, which I do know really well. So those two, American government classes went well for me. The economics was a little bit harder, but we muddled through it. The students were amazing. I spent a little time with each of the classes, asking what they would like to see about education change in our district, and they gave me some terrific feedback. And Ms. Austin was a lovely host, and so was Cocoa High. Also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Bland at Stone Middle School. She put on a community event evening and showcased the entire school. And I was blown away by some of the things that we are offering, or that Stone is offering our students. She had classrooms set up and students volunteered to come in the evening to school and showcase what they are doing. The Forsenex, Forsen, Forsenex? Am I saying that right? Like, study of.
Forensics.
Forensics, thank you. The forensics class. She has like three or four classes a day of forensics and the students, sorry. The students were so engaged and excited, almost excited as Mr. Susan gets about drones. They had outlines.
And construction.
And construction.
And manatee, and Edgewood.
Okay.
They also were showcasing their avid program, which is very impressive. And then Veterans Day, oh my goodness, our whole district puts on some great shows for Veterans Day. Went to Surfside Elementary and Indy Atlantic Elementary on Veterans Day, or the Friday before Veterans Day. And the students, the choirs, the time that the staff puts into these to pay tribute to our veterans is, is exceptional. Several of us, if not was it all of us, went to Sea Park Take a Vet to School Day, and that is something to get excited about. The History Channel was there. It's an annual event. Patrick Air Force Base did a flyover with a helicopter and waved to the kids, and it was a, it was a pretty, a pretty exciting thing to be part of. And last but not least, I attended Jefferson Middle School's 50th anniversary, so congratulations to them for being, going and going strong for fifty years.
Thank you, Ms. Deskovich. Ms. Belford?
So I'm going to apologize ahead of time, because there is a lot of awesome stuff that has happened in the district since our last meeting. So I will, I will try to be appropriately fast with the recognition. Sea Park, Samantha McGill at Sea Park has been putting that program on for ten years now. And I think most of you had already gone. I think Mr. Susan and Mr. Ziegler and I were still there at the end of the program, because I, you guys were there earlier, I came late. But wonderful recognition for Ms. McGill for all of the work that she's done over the past ten years for the Take a Vet to School program. She had letters of recognition from Bill Posey and Marco Rubio and I think all of the local delegates. And they made her this beautiful quilt, and so kudos to her for all of that amazing work that she has done over the years. She certainly has impacted a lot of lives. Also had the opportunity to attend the Apollo's, Apollo Elementary Veterans Day Ceremony, another great ceremony, where they do just phenomenal recognition of our, our veterans in a very respectful way. So many thanks to them. Also wanted to give a shout out to Janice Schultz and Jeff Arnott. We had a town hall discussion in Titusville about job training opportunities that, that may exist. And with not a whole lot of notice, Janice and Jeff were able to go and attend and share some of the great work that's going on in BPS and also connect with others, so that we can build on that work and, and continue to provide additional opportunities. So many thanks to them for that. Thank you to Ms. Enval for our wonderful invigorating ethics training over at Orange County Public Schools, and thank you to Orange County Public Schools for hosting us. Ethics is not something that's easy to make fun while you're also learning about some serious stuff. But, yeah, four hours of, of ethics training, which is mandatory for us every year. So thank you to you and Mr. Rodriguez for creating a fun environment for us to achieve that. On the fifteenth, many of us attended the Champions Breakfast for the Brevard Schools Foundation. And many people in our community came out to provide support, which is wonderful. Schools Foundation did an amazing job of really kind of driving home the message and the impact that they have for our students. And there's so much that we could not do for our teachers and our students without their support. So many thanks to all that came out to support them. On the sixteenth, I had the opportunity to see our suicide prevention dollars that we put in the budget this year at work. And I was so thankful to have the opportunity to join the Astronaut High School War Eagles. They invited in Dr. Lehman Hicks to speak to their student body. And it was wonderful to have the opportunity to be there and see the impact that he was able to have on the students. They had some community support as well, because it was a little bit more than what we had budgeted. But those dollars that we had budgeted had a significant impact on, on their ability to bring him in as a speaker. So he's got some, some great information out there. Couple of quotes that he, I, I walked away with that I think were significant for our students. And one is, failure is not falling down, it's not getting back up. That's when, when you, you really have run into issues. So just a lot of encouragement for our students as they face so many challenges these days. So thanks to, thank you to this Board for providing that funding. I know it's always challenging to determine where our dollars go, but I think that was significant. On the seventeenth, I had the opportunity to join the Andrew Jackson Middle School Generals for their professional day. Mr. Ziegler was there as well. They do this every year where they take the boys into the gym, and they have men that come in and, and talk to the boys and help them to learn how to tie a tie. And then they have the girls out in separate rooms throughout the school and have various professionals that come in and speak to them about professionalism and, and respect and that sort of thing. So had an opportunity to speak to two great groups of girls, but, so thank you to Jackson for the opportunity, but more importantly, thank you for all of the community people that come out and support that, that event. I know my, my son came home and told me that he had an enormous amount of fun in the gym with all of the guys and the ties. And so thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for always supporting that as well.
And if I may jump in, he's quite the gentleman. He did come up and introduce himself and told me who he was. I was perfect.
Yes, he is, he is quite the gentleman. I'm very proud of him. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the Chili Cookoff at Atlantis, and this was an event that was put together in sixteen days. It was in response to two of our Brevard students who recently lost their mother, and their father has been disabled for some time. So they are in, in quite a situation, as you can imagine. But Atlantis, Space Coast Enterprise Challenger, all came together in sixteen days. They put together this Chili Cookoff. They raised over two thousand dollars to support this family, which was phenomenal, to see everyone come together and, and support in the community like that. Had the opportunity to meet one of the girls. She was there, and she was incredibly appreciative. So it just reminds me how much of a community we truly are in BPS and how people pull together. I also had the great opportunity while at the Chili Cookoff to speak to one of our social workers, going back to our budget allocations, and to hear some of the work that they are doing for our students, which I think is important. And I know I'm running long, and I promise I'm going to finish soon, but I just feel like this is, this is something that we all need to hear, because I know we've had lots of discussion about the budget allocations and why we have social workers in schools. And in the conversation, this particular social worker focuses on truancy. And so she, if you can imagine this, serves fifty schools, five zero, fifty schools, to, to address truancy with the students. And so in the conversation, I was asking her, you know, what, what is your impact? What are you able to do? And we talked a little bit about some of the things that contribute to truancy and some of the things that she's been able to do to help families. And I think it's just critical to realize that what she is doing, it would not be realistic for us to expect that our teachers or assistant principals or our principals or our deans would have the time or the resources or the connections to really meet the depth of needs that a lot of our students are facing. So once again, thank you to this Board for supporting social workers in our schools. I think it is critically important to our student success going forward. Today, and I was not able to be there, I apologize to Astronaut High School for not being able to make it, but as you know, we had a board commitment this morning at eleven. But very exciting, Brevard County Fire Rescue donated to our CTE program at Astronaut for the Emergency Medical Program, donated a functioning ambulance for our students to be able to work with, which is super, super exciting. And that was coordinated by Jim Johnson, the BPS CTE, and Chief Fred Jots with Brevard County Fire Rescue. They were apparently the catalyst for making this all come together. So today, our students were delivered a, a fully functioning ambulance for them to use in their CTE program, which they're super psyched about lights, the whole thing. Don't get any ideas, Mr. Susan. No, no joy rides in the ambulance. No, no joy rides in the ambulance.
Mr. Orlando Magic Game.
Yeah, no. So, so many congratulations to the students at Astronaut that'll have the opportunity to take advantage of that, and, and also many thanks to Brevard County Fire Rescue for that opportunity for the students. And the last thing, and then I promise I'm gonna hush. For years in this district, I have heard from parents and teachers and administrators who express concern about the amount of waste that goes on in our cafeterias, and was under the impression that there was really nothing that we could do about it. So I had someone reach out to me with an idea about how we could utilize some of that waste. We were under the impression that we couldn't provide those items to humans, but perhaps there would be an opportunity to support some animal rescue groups with waste that couldn't be re-fed to humans. Started doing some research, worked with Kevin Thornton. The awesome, awesome news, and many thanks to Kevin for making this happen, is that there is a memo that went out to all of our principals this week, letting them know that BPS is now supporting the concept of sharing tables. So those apples and carrots and granola bars and anything that is, is wrapped can be placed on a table in the cafeteria for other students who may be hungrier than some, or for students to trade out some of the things that they don't want. Also, the opportunity for those things that are not used at the sharing table with the students, for us to potentially donate some of those items to shelters and various nonprofits in the community. So I am personally super excited about that. It's been a long time coming, and I cannot thank Kevin Thornton enough for doing the, the hard work to coordinate and get that message out to our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Ziegler, hard act to follow?
I had like, I had like 20 items, but I'm just gonna go, I was just gonna pick two, so. No, I just, I only got a couple of quick ones, and they actually all have been mentioned. But I wanted to thank Glenn Outlaw and the gentlemen of Tide Together for, again, coming to, to Jackson Middle and working with our students for several periods there. I had the opportunity to open that session, and I'll, I'll tell you, interestingly enough, we've been through, in front of a lot of different groups of middle school boys, and these were probably the most well-behaved right out of the bat. They didn't have, they, they, they were, they were attentive, they weren't joking around, they didn't have their headsets in, listening to music, and we didn't have to straighten them up, it was just the best group of guys I think we started out with. So thank you, we're talking about a group, we're talking elected officials, military leaders, judges, pastors, all coming out to spend time with these boys and teach them how to be gentlemen, shake hands, introduce themselves and tie ties. Amazing program. I'm hoping we can get it to all of our schools on an annual basis at some point in time when we get enough volunteers. It's not the money that challenges us, it's the volunteers working with the, with the boys. And also, as, as mentioned, well, first of all, thank you to all of our, our veterans for their service. We did have Veterans Day, and I did have a wonderful time at Sea Park at their Take a Vet to School Day, with over 100 veterans in attendance and in the classrooms all day. I'm gonna stir the pot a little bit here. As I've been asking this question for a while, and I asked it to a lot of our vets at this event. So several years ago, we had to have school on, on Veterans Day to make up a day due to a storm, and on that day, we just had, we had programs all through our, our district on that day, all about veterans and, and, and I didn't realize that we could have school on Veterans Day. That's an option, I don't think it's been statute that we have to be closed for Veterans Day. I was so impressed by these kids engaging with the veterans at Sea Park on Take a Vet to School Day, and it really occurred to me, when we have a day off for our kids for Veterans Day, do they really know why they have the day off? And I'm not sure that they do, and I think we're missing a grand opportunity just to have a day of having programs, veterans and history through all of our schools. We are a very veteran-rich community that have, probably can put veterans in all 82 schools in one day if we organize it, and I'd like the board for the future to consider that that's what Veterans Day should be all about going forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ziegler, and I will second what everybody said about Veterans Day. As a now-veteran, after 30 years, I can call myself a veteran, and it is amazing what this community does to support veterans, not only the school district, but the school district's involvement in all the different activities, parades, recognitions, is, is thread throughout the entire community, and it really, really just adds to the, to the excitement, the, the level of, of, of respect that we give our veterans. And so I just thank every principal, teacher, staff member that encouraged and allowed their students to participate as much as they did, because it really means a lot. Couple of quick things that maybe weren't mentioned. Right at the end of October was the Raider, JRTC Raider District Championships. They were held at Rockledge High School. For those who don't know, Raider's a JRTC extracurricular program. It's outside of the, it's, it's run by JRTC, but is, is just like any other sporting activity. It consists of seven or eight pretty high-intensity type activities, 5K run as a team, 300 pound tire flip, mile carry of a, of a stretcher with lots of weight on it, and backpacks with 40-pound weights and everything. Really, really cool events, and this was to get the opportunity to go to the state championships, which are in the first week of December up in, over in Lakeland. Was held at Rockledge High School. They did an amazing job. I think there were 17 schools present, which means there were probably 30-some teams, and they were able to get the, everybody through all those events in about, from about 7:00 AM till about noon, and they just did a wonderful job. The Rockledge mix team won the districts and will be going on to state. The Vera female team will be going to state, and the Cocoa Beach male team will be going to state. Interesting, at, as the state leadership took a look at the, at the scores, the Merritt Island male scores were only about a second and a half behind after all these events, after all these team events over six hours at a time, they were about a second and a half off, so they extended an invitation to Merritt Island to participate in the state championships as well. So we have actually two male teams going to that. So congratulations to all them, and of course, all of the, the leadership there at the officer and enlisted level that, that provides such great mentorship to our, our JRTC students. We mentioned the BS, or the Brevard Schools Foundation Champions Breakfast. Just to reiterate what that organization does, they, they support us in so many ways, but there are really three things that really, that come home. Their Take Stock in Children program, which provides mentorship to, to children or, or young adults as they work their way through high school and get a scholarship on to college. They have to work with that mentor all the way through. We have mentors that are throughout this county that do just amazing work with them, and the Schools Foundation allows that to happen. Our school supply zone up in Clear Lake facility, up in Cocoa, gets just an unbelievable amount of school supplies out to the schools, and that's going to increase tenfold. They were just approved as the, as a full member of the organization that, that allows for them to get more stuff, and I think Ms. Kershaw said they had like 19 pallets of stuff coming this week, so pretty neat. And then they have mini-grants for our teachers who submit things that they would like to do, unique to the classroom, and the organization then provides, judges those and, and provides mini-grants to allow things like that to happen. So pretty, pretty neat stuff, and a great partner for us as a school district. Spent a short time at the Endeavor Community Night, or the Call for Action Night. Endeavor is one of our great elementary schools over in, in Cocoa. Chris Reed invited the parents out, fed them pizza. We now have a, a new slogan for Endeavor. It's called Together We Will, and I guarantee you, after that, everybody's on board together on making Endeavor just an awesome school, continuing the great traditions that they have there, and making sure that our partnership with, with our, our business partners and with our community works together, so that those kids are, are just given the best opportunity to succeed. Also that night, Saturn Elementary, when Dr. Blackburn and I visited there a month or so ago, they, actually it was, I think, during their 50th anniversary, if I'm not mistaken. There was, one of the teachers spoke, her name was Kelly Rouse, she's a sixth-grade teacher there. Happened to be that she was my son's personal care assistant IA during kindergarten, so we started chatting afterwards, because she had mentioned that she was interested in starting a basketball program at the school. They don't really have that, you know, elementary school athletics, but she really thought that it'd be something that would draw the community together, and they could start playing some teams from the Y and that sort of thing, and so she has made that a reality. They had a, a game at Cocoa Y that night to raise, raise funds. It was teachers versus students, and they just had a blast, and parents, I think, were involved as well, and they just had a great time. And what a great way to get the community involved and, and get everybody, giving them a, a, a chance to get together outside of school, and just to see everybody's participation was fantastic. And the last thing I will mention, I think he's gonna come up and speak, but because he is about to be a fellow alumni of the great U.S. Naval Academy, First, Ms. Chipman, First Class Luke Redito is here, and he's gonna speak later, but I did wanna congratulate him on his service election last week. He's gonna be a pilot, and I wish you all the luck in the world in Pensacola and going forward. So thank you very much for being here, Luke, and congratulations.
And with that being said, Dr. Blackburn, do you have anything to add?
Just gonna repeat everything that all five board members said, but I'll just ditto everything with a few additional comments. One, I want to extend a heartfelt appreciation to our CFO, Penny Zurker, our Chief Human Resources Officer, Dr. Carol Kent, our Chief Negotiator, Mr. Rivers Lewis, and the leadership of 10-10, who represent over 3,000 of our support personnel in, in bringing to closure contract negotiations for those employees, and we hope to have them bring in the new year with their adjusted payment, inclusive of retroactive payment. Is that right, Ms. Zurker? That's great. Thank you to all who participated in that. And as far as everyone knows, we're, we had an impasse with our teachers, but I'm happy to report that we've been able to work with leadership from Brevard Federation of Teachers, and we have negotiations rescheduled for December 4th, so we can come back to the table. And I'm hopeful that we'll have a, a similar resolution to be able to, to get our contracts resolved there with those employees as well. And last but not least, want to offer a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving to everyone here and across the entire district. Take time out to rest, recuperate with family, and do all of the overeating that you desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda, and Dr. Blackburn.
Chairperson and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition item, 22 consent items, four action items, two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which our changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to item A12 on administrative staff recommendations, a revision to consent item F16 on meeting minutes, a revision to item F18 on the agreement between the School Board of Brevard County and Brevard Schools Foundation, and a revision to action item G37 on School Board versus Harris, case number 052017, CA 040993. Additionally, there was a revision to information item H41 on the 2017-18 Student Progression Plan for Brevard Public Schools.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Deskovic. Is there any discussion? Amy, was your intent to?
Yes, yes.
I do have a request to add the Rule Development Workshop portion involving the proposed revisions to Board Policies 5772, 7217, 5136, and 5511, as previously advertised. This was scheduled, a workshop at Policy Development Workshop scheduled at 4:00 PM today, and properly advertised. Another matter took precedence and prohibited the holding of this workshop. And although I don't think anybody was there to speak and provide public input at that time, we do want to give the public any opportunity at this time, if they were so inclined to speak on any one of those policies, those four policies. Do we have anybody that would like to provide input on those? We will have a public hearing where we will have even more opportunity to do so.
And I'll read into record what the policies are to inform the board and the public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the first one is policy 5511, which is our dress and grooming policy. The cabinet member who worked on this is Dr. Beth Thede, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The purpose of the proposed revisions to the policy is to ensure compliance with all applicable federal and state laws, Florida State Board of Education rules, board policies, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines. In addition, the proposed revisions promote transparency and accountability. It was taken to a cabinet meeting on October 30, 2017. Tonight is the Rule Development Workshop. On December 12, 2017, there will be a School Board approval, and the effective date will be upon approval. This policy is being revised to clearly define dress and grooming requirements as they relate to students enrolled in the district. Particular areas of revision include the following. Extreme hairstyles or hair colors that create a disruption are prohibited. Pierced jewelry is no longer limited to the ear. Clear plastic spacers or retainers have been removed under accessories. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLDA. Mr. Craig, at this time, I would invite you to ask the public if there are any comments.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Any comments on 5511? Hearing none, Dr. Blackburn?
Okay. Moving on to policy 5772, titled Weapons, also handled by Dr. Beth Thede, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The purpose of the proposed revisions to the policy is to ensure compliance with all applicable federal and state laws, Florida State Board of Education rules, board policies, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines. In addition, the proposed revisions promote transparency and accountability. This, too, was discussed at a cabinet meeting on October 30, 2017. It is here for rule development this evening, November 21, 2017. Will come before the board on December 12, 2017 for approval, and will become effective upon that approval. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding weapons on School Board property, and to clarify definitions, prohibited activities, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following. Revised definition of weapon, required for students to, requirement for students to immediately report knowledge of weapons and threats of violence, express exceptions to the prohibition from openly carrying a handgun or carrying a concealed weapon. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLDA. Mr. Craig, I would invite you to ask for public comment.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on policy 5772, Weapons? Hearing none, Dr. Blackburn.
Next policy is policy 5136, titled Wireless Communication Devices. This one is handled by Mr. Russell Cheatham, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Technology. The purpose of the proposed revisions to the policy is to ensure compliance with all applicable federal and state laws, Florida State Board of Education rules, board policy, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines. In addition, the proposed revisions promote transparency and accountability. This, too, was discussed at a cabinet meeting on October 30, 2017. It comes before you tonight at a Rule Development Workshop. It will come before the board on December 12 for approval, that's 2017, and will become effective after its approval on the 12th of December. This policy- This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding wireless communication devices, usage on school board property, and to clarify definitions, prohibited activities, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: revised definition of wireless communication device, or WCD, guidelines for proper usage of WCDs while on property owned or operated by the board, authorizes administrator to direct proper usage of WCD, added language to ensure consistency with other board policies. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLDA. Mr. Craig, at this time, I would ask you to invite public comment.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on policy 5136, Wireless Communication Devices? Hearing none, Dr. Blackburn?
And last but certainly not least, policy 7217, titled Weapons. Major Andrew Walters and Dr. Mark Mullins, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, worked on this particular policy. The purpose of the proposed revisions to the policy is to ensure compliance with all applicable federal and state laws, Florida State Board of Education rules, board policies, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines. In addition, the proposed revisions promote transparency and accountability. It was discussed at the October 30 cabinet meeting, comes before you tonight, November 21, at a rule development workshop. It will come before the board on December 12, 2017, and will be effective immediately after said approval. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures regarding weapons on school board property and to clarify definitions, prohibited activities, and other changes in compliance with applicable federal Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: defines areas in which individuals are prohibited from openly carrying a handgun or carrying a concealed weapon or firearm; provides express exceptions to the prohibition from openly carrying a handgun or carrying a concealed weapon in certain circumstances; adds definitions of administration building and school property; requires posted notices at each entrance of a school and/or school building and on buses and other board-owned vehicles. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLDA. And Mr. Craig, I would invite you to ask for public comment.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on policy 7217, Weapons? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and thank you for your time, audience, as we work through that critical policy portion. Dr. Blackburn, can you lead us into the administrative staff recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. And members of the board, there are four administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan and seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. At this time, I would like to take this, oh, sorry, Dr. Blackburn, that's you. Please take, take your, your title and go forward.
All right. At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome and recognize Stephanie White on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Anderson Elementary to the position of Assistant Principal at Myla Elementary School. Ms. White.
I just want to say thank you to the board and for Ms. Kelly Dufresne for the opportunity. I want to thank my colleagues and friends who have supported me. I want to especially thank Ms. Denise Johnson and Ms. Candy Jones for being amazing role models, mentors, and for always leading by example. And I want to thank my children who make me proud every day and who have been my greatest champions. Thank you.
Next, congratulations are in order to Ms. Patricia Kowee on her appointment to the position of Assistant Principal at Columbia Elementary School. Ms. Kowee.
Thank you. Thank you to the board and thank you to Principal Roberts for giving me this opportunity. My husband, Tarek, is with me and he's been with me every step of the way. We are so excited to join the Brevard community. We have family in Brevard County schools, so we've had the opportunity for several years to, to come and get to know the community and, and be part of, of the community and to join you in, as Assistant Principal. I will bring every single day the belief that with active engagement, matching appropriate supports, every single one of our students and families will thrive. Thank you.
I will take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Nancy Schuler, Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Magnet High School, who will be retiring in January. Thank you, Ms. Schuler, for your service to our schools and our students. Ms. Schuler.
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Blackburn for the support that you've given me over the many, many years and the seven principals that I've worked for over the, the past 30 years and my, all the teachers and faculty that I've been grown to love at Central and at Palm Bay Magnet High School, my family and then that has represented here today, part of my family. I have four children. My youngest is able to be here today. And then my husband for his undying support of all the craziness that I have lived through these last 30 years. So, thank you.
Dr. Blackburn, please tell us about our recognition item.
Mr. Craig, will I ever? So, this is a pretty big country, right? I mean, a lot of states, a lot of school districts, tens of thousands of schools, right? Charter, traditional public, private, just tens and tens and thousands of schools. Last week, the secretary, or two weeks ago, the Secretary of Education recognized blue ribbon schools in the country. And just so, for those of you who don't know, if you've ever heard of the Grammy or the Oscar or the Emmy, the Blue Ribbon Award is like all of those and then some, right, for public education, inclusive of the SEC football championships. Like all that stuff rolled into one. Tens of thousands of schools across the entire country and only 342 schools were recognized as blue ribbon schools. Here in the state of Florida, there are also thousands of schools here in Florida. There were 12 in the entire state recognized as blue ribbon schools. There is one district in the state of Florida that has not one, not two, but three blue ribbon schools, only district in the entire state of Florida. And without saying or believing anything disparaging about any other kind of school, whether it be public charter or private, but all three blue ribbon award winners here in Brevard County are all traditional public schools and they're all with us here tonight. They are Robert Louis Stevenson Elementary, Manatee Elementary, and Edgewood Junior/Senior High School. Yeah! We're going to ask, I can tell by the different colored shirts in the audience, we have a lot of our staff members and, and community leaders from all three schools. So, we're going to start with Stevenson Elementary. Mr. Cornow, if you could escort everyone you have with you to the front. I'll ask Chairperson Craig if we can join them and take a picture with, with Stevenson and then we'll do Manatee and then we'll do Edgewood. You can clap as they walk up because they really deserve it. Is that okay, Dr. Blackburn? It's my school, man. Can we stop?
Yeah, let's take a break before.
Because they're all going to clear out anyhow, so we might want to take a break.
Poor principal. Oh, yeah, James. Poor principal, she's still here.
I have a request for a short recess. We'll take four minutes in recess. Thank you for the opportunity to give us a quick break. We are now at public comments. The maximum allowed at time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson and no person may address or question board members individually. Board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no attack, action will be taken this evening by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with their concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, and request that a response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I do request that you speak into the microphone and state your name. Thank you. We have 12 public speakers. Sorry? Yeah, this is fine. It's fine. This is fine. We have 12 public speakers. And I will call in groups of three. First, John Meekle, sorry, Michelle Mason, and Anthony Calucci.
There's a bunch of people that are here for the CPR. Would it be pertinent to have them just speak when we bring the CPR in?
Yeah.
So can I just tell them, hold until we get to...
Sorry, Mr. Michael. The, your request, Mr. Susan, is what?
Request would be to have the CPR...
Put your microphone on. Oh, I got you here.
It is on.
Okay, go ahead.
Request would be that CPR individuals would speak to the CPR portion of our student progression, progression plan. So if you are sitting in here waiting for the CPR, if you guys just wait till that moment, if I can get a motion in a second to do so.
Well, we don't need a motion for that.
Okay, perfect.
But... It's pretty far down in the agenda. I would encourage that we probably stick to the, to the public comment here.
If you guys are okay with that.
And I think we can probably put the, put the two and two together.
Perfect.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Michael.
Hello, my name is John Meekle. I'm the director at Sierra Nevada Corporation. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and administration, it's an exciting time in Brevard County right now. There's history in the making in the commercial space sector, and there's an economic revolution coming to our county. I'm very excited to be a part of that. I work for Sierra Nevada Corporation. We build, Matt's a big fan of drones. We build one of the biggest drones out there that goes in the space. So we're pretty excited about your program as well. Wanted to bring up a couple of things. Companies like SpaceX, Blue Origin, and my company are leading the way in growth in this county and in the commercial space industry across the world. And we want Brevard County to be the area that supplies the students and the workforce for these companies of the future. We're very excited about the possibility of engineers, technicians, and operators coming from our schools, not just in launch operations, but expanding on that into manufacturing and supply chain management here in this county. To assist in that, I've been working with, with the board and discussions on what are some possible ways that industry could support that. There's a couple of things. I think we can couple it together with a few things that the school district can do in both the curriculum and even from a capacity perspective. One of the things I'd like to look at is, is moving from the sixth grade in elementary to middle school and then partner that with what we call a technology wing of all the middle schools in the area and allow the industry then to partner with that wing and to partner with the board and the school district, teachers and everyone, to come up with an exciting, what we call a curriculum enhancement capability to go along with that. Recognize the research shows their overall benefits to students and to schools from both a technology perspective and from a sixth grade and middle school perspective. I'd like to form actually a committee, if you guys are okay with it, where I could bring in the industry from around the county to help with you and the board in facilitating those goals. Part of the idea of the committee would be to drive industry enhancements to curriculum, get engagement from the industry in terms of lectures with the classrooms and facility tours. Also like to support the administration with any initiatives that they need support on regarding funding, our impact needs, mileage adjustments, constructions for schools, and other efforts that are important to them where they need industry support. Some of the ideas that we have, along with these STEM wings, as they may be called, to get the kids excited would be modeling the classrooms based off of a Fuse Studio concept that I've been doing some research on. There's concepts of Google Classroom, code.org, which is exciting software that can get kids into programming. Even my eight-year-old daughter is using it and posting her games to Facebook right now. It's a very powerful tool for kids.
Mr. Meekle.
Game Salad is another tool.
Mr. Meekle, I appreciate your comments. I'm sorry, but we do have to limit you to the three minutes. I would ask that you would talk to Dr. Sullivan in the back and Ms. Stephanie Archer before you leave here to make sure that you all have shared your contact information so that we can continue on that partnership because I think everything you're saying is right on board. So I appreciate it.
Excellent. Sorry, I got through half of my stuff.
Michelle Mason.
Okay, do you hear me? Good? Okay, I'm tall, so I always have to move it up. Good evening, I'm Michelle Mason. I'm the youth market director for the American Heart Association. I work with all the schools here in Brevard County. And I wanted to take a moment to thank you guys for your continued support for our critical mission of saving lives, so building lives full, free from cardiovascular disease and stroke. Without your support from any programs, we wouldn't be able to support our mission. And even with the support that we do have from the county and across the nation, one in three Americans still suffer from heart disease. So obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done. I also wanted to take a moment to share my personal story, why I'm so connected to the mission of the American Heart Association. Along with, it's very near and dear to me, and I'm sorry if I get emotional. It's actually very personal at this moment. But it's really important to me as you guys review the policy tonight and implement hands-only CPR that I share this with you. Many of you may have heard of a young football coach that is employed by Brevard Public Schools. He's Cocoa High School. That day, while he was out on the field, he collapsed. I'm sure you heard that story. That young man that I'm talking about is my brother. He's my little brother. Although he's six foot five and not so little anymore, actually bigger than me. It's really important that we, we pass this. It's through the thanks of Coach Lance Jenkins, Off Duty Officer Winfred Strickland, and Coach Ray Kamika that they immediately implemented CPR and used the AED on him that saved his life. Thankfully, he's back on the field. This is his second week coaching. He missed the Rockledge Cocoa High game, which is a pretty big deal from where I'm from. But he's back on the field with a life vest, doing what he loves. And thankfully, we get to spend another Thanksgiving with him. I wanted to share with you a couple of things. Nearly 424,000 people have cardiac arrest outside of a hospital each year, and only 10% survive, most likely because they're not given the CPR and the timeframe that they're needed. Given right away, CPR doubles or even triples survival rates. Teaching students hands-only CPR could save thousands of lives by filling our community with lifesavers, those trained to give sudden cardiac arrest victims the immediate help they need until EMTs arrive. Five minutes is the difference between life and death. If no CPR is provided or no defibrillation occurs within three to five minutes of the collapse, the chances of survival drop. Putting life-saving skills in our students' hands can change our community's health as we create generations of lifesavers. If the people that were there to save my brother didn't have these skills, the outcome that I'm looking at would be very different. I strongly thank you, and I continue to encourage you to support hands-only CPR with our students. Our future could very well be in their hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mason. Anthony Calucci, followed by Vanessa Skipper, and then Don Sierzant.
I think I'm standing in the corner.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Starting January 5th, our teachers will begin a work-to-the-contract campaign. We will continue this campaign until we have a favorable contract. It's unfortunate that the situation in this district has come to this, but don't tell me that I didn't warn you. You all way overestimated the morale in this district. You thought birthday cards, selfies, and platitudes would overshadow the financial despair our teachers are feeling. You thought that the Blaine-Tallahassee game would work yet again. You thought $516 would shut up our teachers. Never mind that highly effective teachers in Seminole County will receive a $1,370 raise. Never mind that Volusia's highly effective teachers will get a $1,445 raise and that Orange County will provide a $1,125 raise for highly effective teachers. Never mind that Indian River's highly effective annual contract teachers will receive $1,200. And Osceola County, the worst-paid school district in the area, even managed an $800 raise for those on the pay-for-performance schedule. Not to mention that besides Osceola, all these districts had raises over $1,200 last year, and we got less than half of that. When you look at these other districts, aren't you embarrassed by that? Do you save yourself? We all have the same funding formula? What are we doing wrong? Do you do any kind of self-reflection and take blame for that? Why did our union have to do a full court press for you to increase your offer, which is still the lowest amongst all the local districts? Do you not believe the academic research, as well as your own teachers who are telling you that the low salaries are harming recruitment and retention? Do you ever stop and think that a time of a statewide teacher shortage is going on? Maybe instead of funding 14 new initiatives at a cost of nearly $7 million, you should offer a competitive raise. Have you seen the 30-plus instructional advertisements on Beacon? Do you think funding sports, armored cars, and instructional coaches was a way to fill those positions? Do you ever stop and think maybe you're getting some bad advice from, from folks you're counting on? Advice, advice from folks that really aren't committed to this district? I read an editorial yesterday called "Stop Laying Blame on Teachers." The author stated, "If we all act like good little soldiers who are asked to, to, and continue to march on, keep our heads down, work harder, and don't rock the boat, we will continue to march on, keep our heads down, work harder, and the boat will keep on sailing without a course that includes a real consequence on the people who deliver to our children." The Brevard Federation of Teachers will continue to proudly rock the boat.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Vanessa Skipper, Don Sierzant, followed by Mike Bizarro.
Vanessa Skipper, Brevard Federation of Teachers, and English teacher at Cocoa High School. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Tina Deskovic for taking up Lauren Austin's offer at the last meeting and spending a day in a secondary teacher's shoes. We appreciated that, and the students did as well. If you're available on December 7th and 8th, or if anybody else on the panel is available on those days, please feel free to come take over my classroom. I will not stay in the classroom, though, so, but I will write subplans for you if you'd like, or you can write plans if you want to as well. I teach English and Journalism. That segues into a major issue that we are currently having in our district, and that is being able to obtain substitutes to be used in our classroom. Schools all over this district cannot get enough substitutes to come work in our schools. It is a problem that we had brought up at the bargaining table but could not come to a conclusion about how to fairly compensate teachers for either having to use their precious planning time to cover classes, or in the elementary world, having to accept seven, eight, 10 students from another classroom that had been split up. As you know, our contract calls for a board workshop. Congratulations, Mr. Craig, on your election as board chair. We would like the board workshop this year to be about that very issue. So we look forward to you guys looking at your calendar, comparing calendars with us to where we can sit down with a face-to-face actual workshop about how to address this issue. As you saw, Ms. Deskovic, teachers' planning time is extremely precious. Speaking from a secondary teacher's perspective, we have approximately 47 minutes to lesson plan, make copies, grade papers, plan for and give specific feedback to students that is both instructive and corrective on said graded papers, attend meetings, make parent phone calls, complete the many surveys that seem to be coming more and more and more, and maybe, just maybe, go to the bathroom. We cannot spend our precious minutes covering a class because our county cannot find and retain enough substitute. This is a problem that we can study and solve together. As I mentioned in my last speech to the board, after my colleagues spoke during the last meeting, I come here to advocate for my colleagues, my students, and my profession. I'm not just a talking head. The issues I bring are real, and we are all counting on you as our elected officials to work with us to solve those issues. Another issue that is glaringly before us is salary. I read in an email that the same embarrassing offer you gave us, you gave our brothers and sisters, who are currently represented by 10-10, who drive buses, cook meals, sometimes the only meals our students eat for the day, keep our campus sparkling and clean, work in classrooms with students, and many other vital duties that contribute to our students' success. The same rate, or the same raise, that doesn't keep up with inflation. Laughable. It was said that 10-10 was bullied into taking it. When I went to confirm that by watching the session, I found that their sessions aren't recorded. I'd like to know why. One of my public relations professors from the Nicholson School of Communication at the University of Central Florida used to tell all of us that he could, "He who controls communication controls." The Brevard Federation of Teachers...
Miss Skipper, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
We look forward to controlling communication.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sierzant.
My name's Don Sierzant.
All right, one minute, please, sir. Followed by Mr. Mike Bizarro, and then Dan, and then Dan Bennett. Mr. Sierzant, I believe you have been talked with our legal department already. Can, can you hear me?
Barely. I'm a little deaf.
Okay. I would just remind you of the decorum rules that I, that I explained before. So thank you very much. Your three minutes starts now.
I'm here before the parents of Brevard County because I feel I have a responsibility to inform you of what's happening in our schools. Kaiser University said, "Anytime there are concerns brought to the attention of the Office of the Chancellor, they are taken very seriously, and an immediate investigation is started." This should be done in all schools. Kaiser University did an investigation and found Chef Stephen Poole guilty and fired him for sexual relationships with faculty and students. Over the years, Chef Poole trained the culinary students at Bayside Lake High School. They would then enroll in Kaiser after high school, where Chef Poole worked. Then, he would hire them to work at Winn-Dixie with him. Chef Poole was accused of rape, which was caught on video multiple times by my daughter, a former student at Kaiser. Here's the police report, right here, okay? Which, here's the police report, which Stephen Poole admitted to the rape and of being a sexual deviant. I would like to give this police report to Major Walters...
Sir, I'll remind you, I'll remind you not to take personal...
Who's responsible?
Please do not take personal attacks against our employees.
I'm not. This is about the kids at the school.
I understand that. I'm just asking you to please just watch the line, and we will absolutely take that into consideration. Thank you.
I would like to give Major Walters, who is responsible for performing the background checks on potential candidates for hire in Brevard County schools, the police report that they missed on the background check of Chef Poole. I would also like to give Major Walters the restraining order that is still active on Chef Poole for domestic violence with children in which a gun was used. Major Walters missed this one in his background check. Others were missed also, not just Chef Poole. Dodd Mitchell, for instance, worked at Astronaut High School, and school officials said Dodd had a track record of inappropriate behaviors around student and staff. Who listened? These are some of the people in the Brevard County schools that I reached out to about this situation. Carol Kent, Matt Reed, Todd Schurer, Major Walters, Melissa Lopez, Rivers Lewis. These are the responses that I got in regards to Chef Poole's track record. Move on. Don't ever call me again. I did my job. Why are you asking questions? And it didn't happen in our school. Are you, as parents, going to be reactive, as the school board is, or proactive? I'm trying to raise awareness to a clear and present danger to our children that is being ignored by the school board and save others from the trauma my daughter and family have been going through for two years. If this is happening in one school and parents are not aware how many other schools this is happening to across Brevard County, it's the right of the parents to know who's teaching their children. You don't question whether your children are safe in school. You assume that they are. Now, Chef Poole is teaching at Southwest Middle School. A middle school. 12- to 14-year-old girls. University fired him. The high school found out that he slipped in the back door without getting a background... The high school found out that he slipped in the back door without getting a background check.
Sir, thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. I appreciate your time, and thank you for sharing that. Mr. Bizarro, followed by Dan Bennett, followed by Mitchman Rodito.
Mike Bizarro, Canal Circle, Sebastian, Florida. I heard John mention Naval Academy, I was class of 1918, and got my MBA at Pepperdine as a Marine artillery. Yeah, I thought something interesting that is relevant, I think, to school venues is I took some BBC-approved lists of attacks by Islam throughout the world. I brought in the 2017 listing here, which is 12,000 people injured, 12,000 people killed across 1,800 attacks. So I went into these databases, and I searched for the word "school." So as it turns out, a little over 1%, 1.05% of these attacks by these Muslim lethal attacks were in school venues. So I think that's relevant information, and it kind of brings into focus how the students here are in fact being betrayed when the school district says there's such a thing as an Allah, and Allah says to kill non-Muslims, etc. So they're opening up the students for these attacks inside the Islam apostasy, which really shouldn't be going on. As I said, it is a betrayal. So in this pack, I made a copy of the packet for everybody on the board. I got the numbers. I pulled off the BBC-reviewed list. And the second sheet is an improvement that this Allah thing contradicts himself from the Old Testament to what he says in the Quran, which is just, you know, preposterous. There's no Allah. And the third is basically a spiritual work of mercy, that by betraying the Muslims in the school district and making them think they might be going to heaven, that's a betrayal of their souls, in which case you cannot get your own souls to heaven. So that's sheet three of this packet. Alrighty, thanks. Did it give Pam paperwork?
Actually, if you give the paperwork to the officer at the door, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Dan Bennett, Mitchman Rodito, and-
Mr. Marcus Hockman.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, members of the school board. Congratulations, John, on your board chairmanship. From back there, it almost looked like it was a game, if not me, and John lost, but I'm sure you're going to do a great job in this. And Misty, thank you for your service. We had a room packed full of teachers earlier. I'm not sure where they all went. But I want to speak on their behalf and the other almost 80 schools that are represented in this district, whether it's a blue ribbon school, whether it's a Title I school, junior-senior mix magnet school, school of choice, neighborhood school. If it's a traditional public school, we represent them, and I'm going to ask you tonight to think about every single teacher in your care, almost 5,000 employees, that whether they're blue ribbon or not, they're doing an outstanding job because they have big hearts for children. And they're part of making this school district an A-rated school district, and they're making a difference for each and every child that's out there. Yes, our bargaining talks, our negotiating talks did break down the other day because we were stuck on four issues that we absolutely have to have in this next contract. We have to do a better job protecting our annual contract teachers. We have a plan. I'm glad that you're ready to listen to the plan and negotiate that plan back and forth. As I've said throughout bargaining, it doesn't have to be exactly the way we say. It can happen, but you have to be willing to make it work, so I'm glad we're going back to the table to do that. We need protections in our evaluation at the first U in a particular element. The first time you find out you're unsatisfactory in an element can't be when you get the final summary of the year. So again, the wording doesn't matter, but we have to get that fixed. We have to have it so when this enriched software crashes, or whatever we're using for ex-ed paperwork, when that software crashes and teachers have to do double work outside of school hours, they have to be compensated for it somehow, even if it's just in comp time, which doesn't cost you anything. So I appreciated the call the other day when Rivers Lewis called me back to the table and said, "We're ready to talk about those issues." And finally, and the one that always gets the most attention, and Anthony talked about it, I thought, very well in his speech, we're not going to settle on a 1.5% raise. I have to congratulate you on some good strategy. You went after our weakest link. You went to the other union that represents fewer employees than us, and you got them to cave. And you got them to take the deal. Because we all know that unions aren't supposed to be divided. So I guess if one union took it, the other union was supposed to take it too. I'm telling you right now, that's not going to happen. We're not settling on 1.5%. It's important that those members, and we've reached out, it's important that those members know that their leadership failed them. Solidarity 101 is that unions stay connected, not divided. You managed to divide us. It's a good strategy on your part. I have to congratulate you. I mean, I would have done that too, if I thought of it. But I personally hope that they vote down that deal, and I hope that you all figure out a way to not make us, for the second year in a row, get the lowest raises in the area. We're falling in state rank over a couple of years, and I see my red lights on. We have to find a way to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mitchman Rodito, Marcus Hockman, Nicole Lee.
Give a man to fish, and you feed him for a day. Teach a man to fish, and you feed him for a lifetime. I'd like to add another part to this proverb, if I may. If you fish with a man, you have a friend for a lifetime. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mitchman First Class Luke Reddito, and I'm a senior at the United States Naval Academy. Mentorship is one of the most valuable experiences that one can have in life. Either being a mentor or the mentee, the mutually beneficial experience is one that transcends generations and allows for the mentee to become the mentor, keeping the torch lit for years to come. I've been very blessed in my life to have a number of mentors that have drastically changed my life for the better. From my next-door neighbor, who was a World War II veteran that first inspired me to want to join the military, to a close friend that took me flying when I was in third grade and that inspired me to become an aviator. Mentorship allows for the mentor to change a person's life for the better, with the only real cost is the time and dedication to the cause. I have been fortunate to have teachers that have turned into mentors over the years when I was a student in the Brevard Public School System. There are a few individuals that I'd like to recognize. First is Ms. Warren, who was my first-grade teacher, who inspired my love of writing, and hasn't stopped encouraging me since. Ms. Hoyt, who in third grade taught me the value of reading, and every once in a while checks up on me to make sure that I'm staying in line. And Mr. Thomas, my eighth-grade math teacher, who despite being a West Point graduate, is an awesome individual. His mentorship and life lessons still stick with me today as I entered my final semester at the Naval Academy. Finally, when I was a senior at West Shore Junior Senior High School, I was on the Student and School Board Advisory Council. I had the pleasure of getting to work with Mr. Ziegler, Dr. Mullins, and Ms. Diaz. I was able to learn and be mentored from the best in business. The firsthand experience of being able to learn how to approach and solve issues that face my own peers are lessons I have applied while as a Mitchman at the Naval Academy, and I hope to apply as an officer in the world's finest fighting force. Whether it is in the classroom, on the sports field, or in an after-school program, the opportunity to provide mentorship is ever-present. I have had the opportunity to become a mentor over the years, and I hope that I have been able to have the same impact that mentors had on me. Life often feels like it's on fast forward, and it's easy to get stuck in a rut and focus solely on what is at, what are the tasks at hand and what needs to be accomplished. But I challenge everyone here to take a second, pause, and reflect on mentors that they have had in life, and even drop home line saying a quick thank you for the guidance over the years. And don't be afraid to change a person's life with the simple life lessons that you might inherently know that could change a person's life for the better. Thank you very much for your time. Go Navy, be Army, and happy Thanksgiving.
Luke, thank you so much for taking your time out of your vacation schedule to come and join us, and for giving us that positive message. You are spot-on. I can tell you, after 30 years, you're exactly right, and you will mentor quite a few people, so thank you very much. Marcus Hockman, Nicole Lee, and Sean Seema.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Blackburn. My name's Marcus Hockman. First, by far, just four different topics. I can, I want to say, withholding my personal feelings to the previous board chair, honestly and objectively, did a great job. Really did. For my years that I've observed how the functioning of this, and I study it a lot, it's probably the best I've seen in eight, nine years, easily. And hopefully, to the future board chair, you just get 70% of what you did, then you'll be on the right path. First issue I'd like to talk about, why do we not still have after-school training for our schools? Staff, students, and local law enforcement emergency services need to work together in order to prepare for the world we currently live in. Prepariness will save lives. The second topic I want to address, and I won't go into deep details because it would take more than three minutes to address this, is has anyone brought up conducting a case study on how VPS ES programs and services are conducted here at our public schools? The third item, which I'm hopefully will come fruition this year, next year, whenever, is a PAC, Political Action Committee. And the two objectives would be the focus of the PAC should be to educate constituents on current and future educational issues statewide and nationwide, and B to work with local municipalities, state legislatures, and federal legislatures on current and future local state, through local state and federal legislation that impact our schools, students, and communities. And the fourth topic I would bring up, I would like to see, is possibly the idea of having a revenue action committee. And the purpose would be to educate the public on revenue needs and to create revenue. And without diving into deep details on this, after what I kind of saw last Friday and heard and witnessed, and previous things, the biggest challenge that we have is creating revenue, 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 and revenue. And a lot of people seem to be frustrated, whether it's the people in the back, the teachers, alright? And the next thing is, for this, the purpose of it would create revenue, but also this should be comprised of business community members, school board members, teachers, and the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcus. Nicole Lee, Sean Seema, and then Greg Cope.
My name is Nicole Lee, and I'm here with my CNPS coach, Ms. Barbie Miller from Palm Bay Elementary. I now attend St. Magnet Middle School, but am a proud graduate of Palm Bay Elementary. Last year, I completed a junior individual community problem-solving project. I traveled to Wisconsin for the Future Problem-Solving International Conference to not only represent Brevard County but the state of Florida. My project was coughed it up, and I was focused on educating my community about choking hazards and how to do hands-only CPR. After reading the Florida Today article dated November 1st, I was so excited to hear that hands-only CPR will now be a high school requirement in Brevard Public Schools. Last year, as a part of my project, I coordinated with American Red Cross to teach the entire fifth grade at Palm Bay Elementary how to do hands-only CPR. After seeing the enthusiasm for this invaluable skill, I wrote a letter to Dr. Blackburn suggesting that Brevard teachers should be required to learn hands-only CPR. Knowing that all high school students will now be required to learn hands-only CPR, it truly excited me. I 100% support the school board's decision to pass the new graduation requirement. I thank school board member Matt Susan and community member John Seema for bringing this important topic to discussion. I agree, there's nothing more important than teaching someone how to save a life. But I still encourage Brevard Public Schools to require teachers and staff members to learn hands-only CPR.
Nicole, thank you so much for spending your evening and giving us your opinion. I think it is awesome that you take the initiative to do stuff like that. I think Mr. Susan would like to say something to you as well.
Nicole, I just want to say thank you so much for coming out tonight. We, as a board, developed a policy in the CPR thing, so I didn't want to give credit to myself for something that this board really initiated and ran with. And it was in the pipeline prior to me actually coming on the board, and a lot of the credit goes to the people in the back, because they were working on that prior to us. And I just wanted to kind of clarify that. I didn't want to, you know, like, sometimes I get excited about something, and people think that I'm the one pushing it, but in actuality, it came from them and was supported by the board, and that's truly the only way it truly happened. Plus a great speech by this guy a little while ago. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Sean, thank you so much for joining us again, and please-
Thank you for having us, and thank you, sweetheart. She messed me up. Thank you. And I promise, I didn't plan it, but she messed me up. And I've come tonight to tell you all thank you, thank you very much. And February of 2016, the good Lord tapped our family on the shoulder, and what turned out to be absolute devastation has turned us into missionaries, a mission to save a lot of lives. And in May of 2017, I came here before you, and I asked for your help, and you guys all followed through, and we're so thankful. I just want to say that on July 19, 2016, me and my wife were sitting on the couch, and I decided I would just send a blanket email to every member of the school board and see if I could get anyone to bite. And at the time, Karen Henderson was on the board, and she responded and got me set up with Mrs. Winston, who just took the bull by the horns and made things happen. Then Mr. Susan came on board and became a big advisor, and then, of course, all of you all when I stepped up and asked for your help. You know, here we are now in November, and now we have a policy. We just saw where the school board helped by all new, you know, over 100 and some AEDs for our students. And now we're working, hopefully, push one day where we can have every high school athlete in Brevard County be checked before they take the field for an undetected heart condition that could kill them. I'm going to read this real quick, because as you all know, I'm very long-winded. In 2016, 45,625 Floridians died from cardiac disease. Brevard County alone had 1,719. This young lady right here was almost 1,720. But because of four heroes, the new CPR and how to use an AED, this girl got up off the ground. She was dead, and I know she hates me when I say that, but she was dead, and she was shocked back to life. And she put us on a mission. You guys have done your civic duty, you know? As a public servant and an elected official, I feel you're really charged with two things, and we see it all the time on police cars. Number one, you should protect, and number two, you should serve your constituents. And I say job well done, because this is one of the biggest things that you guys will ever do as school board members. There's no more, I don't care, and I said this before, there's no more important hour in a high school student's life than what they will learn with CPR and how to use an AED. 70 to 88% of people, depending on what resource you look at, are going to have their heart attack or their sudden cardiac arrest event at home. That means it's up to our kids. We're building future lifesavers. As I said back in May, this is your legacy. There's so many things that I know you guys are battling over, but as I said before, I hope one day you'll look in the newspaper and you'll see "Student Saves Parent," or you'll see it on the news. Us guys in this world, we get these updates all the time, these newspaper clippings. I try to forward it to poor Mr. Susan as much as possible.
Mr. Seema, I do appreciate it. I do have to stop you at this point, but thank you again for taking your time.
I will. Thank you so much. And again, I just can't say enough. And I, as a veteran, I salute you for service to your public and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seema, and I know Evan's sitting behind you. As I think, as he and I have talked, you know, there is an obvious progression from detection to protection and prevention, and, you know, the first step is detection. So I know we're working a similar path with them as well. So thank you all for being here together to promote that. And Greg Cope, you made it.
Dr. Blackburn and board members-
Dr. Blackburn and board members, good evening. On April 9th, 2013, Andy Ziegler and four other board members, no longer sitting here, approved an agenda item, F-21 (SSA) number 13-009-P-A. In the same meeting, prior to approval of this agenda item, three schools were voted to be closed. It's very ironic that the same operating cost for these schools is the same operating cost for these, this software package. As a result of this, Brevard Parents Action Committee, we formed an opinion paper, and it was published to our website and our Facebook page. And this was due to the decisions made by this previous board and the superintendent. We asked directly what was wrong with the current software. The answer that we got, quote, "There is nothing really wrong with it," end of quote. It is very disappointing to not only see three schools close, but to see hundreds of children and their teachers displaced, but to see millions of dollars of hard-earned taxpayers' money gone to waste. Mr. Ziegler, we hold you responsible for this no-bid contract. And here we are, years later, millions of dollars out of taxpayers' pockets, and we're receiving a settlement of $50,000. I think with this $50,000, we should invest it in the future. That's a better decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cope. Board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is greatly appreciated. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are 22 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any items?
Amy, looks like the expulsions are under there. Do we need to do anything to follow up on what had today, or do we just...
No, this is a different.
Oh, this is different? This is the other ones? Okay, thanks. No, I don't want to pull anything.
Okay, no one's pulling any. Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? I think we can probably keep going. Did I get a head nod from everybody that we can continue on? Excellent. We'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are four items for your consideration. The first one is item G-37 on School Board versus Harris, case number 05-2017-C-A-040993.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Craig, if I...
Yes.
If I can. I would like to share some points regarding this particular item.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn.
First of all, as the board knows and a lot of the listening audience, we've engaged the help of legal counsel to negotiate the best settlement agreement for this contract, given all of the issues that we've discussed at length over the last number of years. So just to highlight some pieces of the agreement that's before you. First and foremost, this agreement relinquishes contractual obligations of this district to the tune of about $1.4 million, which is inclusive of current and past maintenance issues, maintenance fees. This settlement provides maintenance support at zero cost to the district through June 2021. It allows us time to, one, determine what our software needs are and to pursue the best solutions for the system. This settlement provides for perpetual use of the existing software, the legacy and E-contracts. The settlement provides a $50,000 cash payment to the district, which we will use to offset legal fees that we generated and further minimize the impact to the taxpayers. I want to thank our past chairperson, Belford, for your leadership here, our chief operations officer, Dr. Mark Mullins, chief general counsel, Ms. Amy Envall, our chief information officer, Russell Cheatham, his staff, staff from Human Resources, Finance, for a lot of diligence, a lot of work over the last couple of years. And I definitely want to thank our legal team headed by Scott Wiederman of Wiederman and Malick. In this settlement, there is a non-disparagement clause within the settlement, and I would like to read that non-disparagement clause. It states, "BPS and Harris agree that they shall not privately or publicly criticize or make any disparaging comments about each other and their successors, subsidiary business units or entities, parent companies, products, services, employees, officers, and directors to any individual or entity, including but not limited to clients, customers, consultants, applicants, vendors, investors, financial or credit institutions." As used in this paragraph, the terms "criticize" or "make any disparaging comments" include but are not limited to any verbal or written comment or statement that would have reasonable likelihood of causing an adverse effect on the other party's reputation or ability to conduct business. In layman's terms, I want to share with the board and the audience my concern as superintendent. This has been a very high-profile case and issue. We will continue to get questions from the media, from members of the public, et cetera. I would ask the board and all staff members, because of the non-disparagement clause, to refer people to the 10-page settlement, which includes a joint statement from Harris and the school district. For, and my primary reason is that if the board approves this, this becomes a settlement agreement forever, and at any time that that entity feels that something has been said in a disparaging way, it could definitely jeopardize the settlement that's before you today. So again, I want to ask all staff and the board to refer all inquiries to the settlement, and there is a joint statement within that settlement. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Any board members wish to comment? All I'll say is, I will add on to Dr. Blackburn's thanks to all involved in their tireless efforts to bring this to conclusion. It was not a pretty item. Something that we inherited, but certainly that we own. We take responsibility for it, and rightfully so, and we are moving forward with a, what we believe is a best and final settlement that allows us some breathing room to take a hard and long look at our IT or ET requirements and make the appropriate determination of how we move forward. So thank you again to everyone who was involved in that. And the vote, the item passes 5-0.
Mr. Craig and members of the board, the next one is item G-38 on Department-School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, sir.
The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
Next is item G-39 on Purchasing Solicitations.
And what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Belford has forgotten how to move for second since her year at the chair. Is there any discussion? Dr. Blackburn.
It's going to be a fun year.
Mr. Craig, item G-40 is to hold a public hearing and approve the charter applications for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy High School and Pinecrest Academy Space Coast.
The public hearing regarding the charter applications for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy High School and Pinecrest Academy Space Coast is declared open. I will ask for speakers on each of the charter schools. We begin with Pineapple Cove. Are there any speakers who wish to address the application for Pineapple Cove? Are there any speakers that wish to address the application for Pineapple Cove? None heard? Now we will hear speakers who wish to address the charter application for Pinecrest. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the application for Pinecrest?
Mr. Michael is the only member in the public.
Mr. Michael, do you have anything to say about Pinecrest? No. Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing portion of this meeting closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Motion passes 5-0, and congratulations to both of those schools. Dr. Blackburn.
There are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any item? We will, we will not take any action. Action will come at a subsequent meeting. But is there any board member who wishes to discuss an item? Mr. Susan.
Both H-41 and H-42, I'd like to discuss.
Okay, well, we will start H-41. Since it's information, there's no motion necessary. Please lead us.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's been a part of this, just like John Seema, but I also wanted to let you guys know that when the press releases, and when Debbie Mayfield and Thad Alton are sponsoring a bill, and they want to put together a big press release in support of the state legislation to make this for every other school district. John Seema was on NPR Today, Fox News last week, everybody else saying that Brevard is like the epicenter of CPR for the whole state. So if you guys would like to come out to that. The other thing that he also did, this is daughter, through the SGA organization at Vieira High School, has now targeted members of the representatives and senators inside districts across the state that may be leaning not towards supporting the CPR to contact their student government associations to lobby them in support of the CPR. So a lot of really cool stuff happening there, and I just wanted to let you guys know and make you aware of those things that are going on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Susan. Anybody have any comments on H-41? And Mr. Susan, H-42.
I think, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this? No? All right. One of the concerns that I had on the H-42 was that voting, that the members of the committee that are actually brought up for the attendance boundary changes only have specific to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And I don't know if there's a way or a motion by the board to allow those four individuals to give us their opinions on each one of the boundary changes as they go. The policy was written back in 2009, I think dealing with the school closures. I feel it's leaning towards staff making a recommendation over the top of the voting members on there that are from the public, but giving them the opportunity to speak to and give opinions would also be nice if you're inviting the public to do so. Does that help?
I understand your consideration or your concern. The only thing that I would say is that the information is public well in advance. All those questions can be asked well in advance, and certainly, and certainly more, if they have items to input, I know that the facilities team will listen. And certainly, we have each chosen people to be on that committee that can do that. And then also, you know, if they really are against it, of course, they're there to decide and cast their personal vote, so it's an up or down for them individually. But I would, I would assume that up until that meeting, you would take questions from members of that, of that committee. Is that, would you consider that true? Sorry. Maybe I'm assuming too much. I didn't, I know I'm not.
Mr. Craig, the evaluation committee arose out of a request by the board back in 2011 to evaluate the weighted evaluation criteria. Their job, they've only met once in the past. Their job, as defined by the previous board, was simply to evaluate based on evaluation criteria...
Right.
...the various scenarios before them. In other words, which of the scenarios for a proposal best meet the criteria? If the, so there would be no expectation that they would present additional scenarios for consideration at the meeting, but certainly if they have comments, we sue will be running that meeting or facilitating the meeting, and she would take those comments and forward them to the board for your consideration.
I appreciate that. I think, I think maybe, and I wasn't saying at the meeting, I think the meeting is in December. The information is all public, and they have an opportunity to review all that now, and so if they had a question, clarification issue, any of that type of thing, they can certainly ask you in advance of that meeting. Is that correct? Okay. I think that's where we're going.
And then the reason Dane, I asked him earlier, I gave him a heads up, if he could explain the time period that it takes to actually build a school. I think that the board was under the assumption that we could kick this can down the road two or three years, but the actual process of what we're, we need to do needs to be within the next eight months to get a school in three years. I felt like, and I thought Dane could give us more, alleviate to that more.
Yes, sir. The short answer is, if you're intending to open an elementary school in August of 2020, which is the time we would have funding to do so, we would start that process in May of 2018. The pre-construction activities, and I can detail them for you if you'd like, take about 14 months, and construction of an elementary school takes about 12 months.
So Dane, whether that's an elementary school or a middle school, would be the same time period?
No, sir. It takes about 12 months to build an elementary, about 16 months to build a middle, and about 20 months to build a high school. Depending on the size, of course.
So Dane, if you were saying when we needed to make a direction as a board, oh, if you had to make direction as a board, you would like to get that, whether it be for an elementary school or a middle school, by which time would that be sufficient to give you for a 2020 opening or a 2021 opening?
Well, for a 2020 opening, we would, for a 2020 opening of a middle school, we would have to start that process in January.
This January?
This January, January 2018. Obviously, if you want to delay that by a year in 2021, you can delay that until next January.
Next January. And at that time, if we did delay it to 2021, would give us more impact fees towards that $13.3 million difference that would be there of roughly $6.7 million, I think you stated at the meeting?
That's correct. We would, we would have another six and a half or so of impact fees toward that gap of about $15 million.
Correct.
The only reason I say that is, is because Quest is exponentially growing, and to say that we wouldn't create a situation that would fix Quest until 2021 becomes a serious issue. We may be able to run a pilot project where you take sixth graders from Quest and bus them over to Delora, might be able to do a thing where you move some of those manatee zones a little bit, and although we don't need to make it today, I wanted to make sure that the board knew that by January 1st of next year, we're kind of on the deadline for everything. So as we start putting these together, we can't just push it down the road as much as we want.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Theodore, and thank you, Mr. Susan. There are no staff reports. We are now at the board member reports and discussion points section. In addition to discussion points, I request board members, please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Does anyone have any board member reports?
I don't have a report, but I do have a topic of discussion that I'd like to bring up, and I'll be brief. I was hoping we'd hit it during our workshop today, but since we weren't able to have the workshop, and it includes security, so again, I'm going to be brief and kind of high-level because I don't want to talk too much about the security of our schools in the public setting. But I have concerns with our... But I have concerns with our fencing plans and the way they're being installed and going up. First, I'm finding that our principals' input is not being taken into consideration. They're reporting that they're giving their input, and then their input's being tossed aside, and the fences are going up however we see fit. I don't know if that's happening at every school, but the schools that I've checked with, I feel, from what I've observed, that individual plans are not being done for each school. If a school is similar to another school, they're getting the same model as the other school. And every school has different patterns, they have different things, and we're not taking that into account. And then last, I just want to throw out there and see if there's any appetite from my fellow board members. I have no idea how much it would cost, but I'm interested in getting school safety experts of some sort. I just Googled it, and there's companies out there that will come in and evaluate your whole district. This is what they do, highly qualified people. Major Walters is great, but he's a one-man band, basically, for visiting each of our eighty-two schools and figuring out a security plan in place. So I'm interested in exploring that option. Once again, no idea of the cost at this point, but I'm curious to find out if it's something that we're even willing to look into.
Go ahead, Ms. Susan.
When I sat on the ICO seat, and Dane might tell us, we did hire, under the security, I forget what the gentleman's name was, two directors ago, but anyways, we, he retired. We found that we were behind on some of the recommendations for the fencing. So they hired an individual, I think at like forty-five thousand dollars, to come in and give a security overview, exactly like you said, to do what we did. And I wanted to see if they followed up and if we can bring him back, something like that.
I didn't know that.
If you could expand on that.
Mr. Susan, we hired a retired deputy at the recommendation of the district security director, so it was still a retired deputy. It was not a consultant, as Ms. Duskovich was mentioning.
Could the consultant be used out of the half-penny cent sales tax technically, since we did hire a former deputy to do the same type of thing? Could we hire them to do the same thing? Sets precedence, I think.
My opinion, without having, not having thought about this, I would defer to Ms. Enval, but I would consider that part of a design process, so it would seem like that would be a reasonable thing to do.
Okay.
But I certainly would want others to weigh in on that.
My recommendation would be that you get with Ms. Enval and give her some specifics and get a legal opinion on that specific portion. Ms. Belford?
I was, I was simply going to say that I'm certainly not opposed to at least getting some information on, on cost, as well as areas of expertise from these individuals to ensure that what we are doing makes sense going forward. Obviously, when we have that information, then that would be the time for us to have more in-depth discussion, but I'm not opposed to exploring that option.
My only concern now is that we are, in my opinion, rushing, not everybody would agree with me, to get everything up by the spring. And so I think, if I recall, for example, if we decided to put a push bar gate in the back of one of the fences, there's a, it's going to cost, right? Because it's going up now, and then we would have to take sections down to put them up if we just, if the consultant or whoever decided that was a better approach. So I don't know. We just need to think about that. They're going up. If someone comes in and says that's not the safest way, then we have these extra fees.
Ms. Belford?
I think, and Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in many of those instances where you're referring to a breaker bar gate, I, my impression is that those, where you are requesting that they would go is not where we are actively in the process of putting up fencing in most instances. It's where there's already existing fencing there. Is that correct, Sue?
Generally speaking, with the exception of roughly five schools, the fencing is either in place, meaning it's been in place, it wasn't part of the project, or we have already put our fencing in place. So when we put a new gate in, what we would probably do is rather than replacing a gate that's part of either an existing fence or one that we just installed, we would just put a new gate in that has the panic bar. So we can do that after the fact pretty effectively, based on the cost that we provided to you all recently. So it would just be, there's a fence, there's a six-foot chain link fence, we would work with our district security folks, decide where that gate goes, and we would put it in.
Dr. Blackburn, I think what I'm hearing is that perhaps we can get a message out to principals to make sure that as the first phase of this security project continues to move forward, that we're all on the same page and that there isn't, and where there are concerns, you can work with security to make sure that those are addressed or reasons given or any sort of suggestion to make sure that we are all on the same page. Certainly, as we move from one phase to another phase, we want to make sure that we understand how all the pieces fit together, not to get too far into what those different phases are, but certainly there are, there is more security coming down the line. So we want to make sure that we, we've addressed needs now and that, or that, that the caretaker of that school, that principal, is comfortable with, with the plan that we have because of what may come further, if that makes sense. Is there, is there a way we can get that out and get those, that feedback from the principals?
So a reminder to principals or an assessment as to whether or not they feel that their input has been used?
I wouldn't say input, but just where do they feel, are they comfortable with their current security plan and their current portion of this phase as we are six months out from hopefully finishing them and making sure that we are, that they don't have any outstanding concerns, that they're not harboring any issues, any thoughts that, oh, man, we really wish we would have had this, or we ran a drill two weeks ago and this came up and we could really, you know, benefit to address it now. I just think it's probably, with six months to go in at least our constructed timeline, it's probably a good opportunity to take an assessment of each principal. They own the school, it's theirs. No better people to kind of give us an idea, and I don't think it would be that difficult to get a, you know, leading and learning to get that information together. I'm just not telling you how to do it, but I think there's probably a way to make sure that we have addressed all those issues. And certainly, if there's a couple of schools that may have some issues now, maybe there's a couple more that, like I said, have run a drill or something where they have uncovered a place that they would like to either question or figure out how they're going to continue addressing that.
Are there any principals now that the board wants to bring to my attention that have expressed they're not comfortable with their plan?
They, I've been working with them already. I don't, I mean, I can call out people right now, but just.
No, I think, you know, if you could just probably work with them.
They're aware of the ones that I've been notified of already. They're working to straighten it out. But my, to John's point, if they're there, there might be more. And we only know that the ones that I'm speaking of are there because I said, are you sure? Are you sure? And, you know, the luck, she was like, we're fine. And everybody in the office was like, and so you know that there was more to the story. So I pushed a little, and she wasn't really consulted. And so there might be more out there, that's all.
We have, just so the board is aware, where we do have principals that have pushed back on our security strategy or have found operational issues, we do try to address them. But certainly, if there are others out there, we'd like to hear about them and be able to address them. So happy to follow up on that as we do.
Great. Thank you.
And then the other thing was, if, can we move forward on just getting some pricing on? Is there, Missy said she's interested. Does anyone else have an appetite for it?
Certainly, I'm always interested in getting a, you know, getting a quote on that. Yep.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Does anybody else have any report? Mr. Ziegler?
Thank you. Next week is the Florida School Board Association Conference. And for those attending, Thursday morning is the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition Breakfast, where I will gladly pass the chairman baton over to the vice chair, Lynda Cobert, from Orange County School Board, and take the prestigious position of past chair. Great place to be. Also want to announce, some of you may know, a local gentleman here in Brevard County, Chris Hollyfield, will be presenting at Central Middle School on December twelfth at nine thirty. Chris travels the nation, talking to schools and children with his Got Respect Tour. He's a past WWF wrestler, he had a television show, and I have seen him speak before kids, and they just are riveted to him. And I haven't seen him in years, so I'm looking forward to this. He's going to be speaking to their eighth graders at Central, and I invite everybody to come join and see him. It's nice to have a lot of great speakers that want to come and give a good message to our kids. It's definitely the right thing for us to be doing. And I know that this board wants to do a lot more of that. Just wanted to announce that, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Anyone else? Mr. Susan?
Couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The first one is that one of the deputies that's here with his K-9 unit has mentioned a couple of times that he can't get the sensor to his vehicle unless he parks close enough to our building while his K-9's out in the vehicle, which brings up the fact that he may, would like to have a parking spot right here so that he, his sensor can make it into here. And Dane, I didn't know if the board also thought so, if we could move forward with trying to identify one of these handicap spots out here to give to the deputy in the case that he has his K-9 unit. We can move a handicap to another spot if he's there, right? Okay.
I think he'll figure it out.
That's one. And then the second one is that there's been, Amy Enval doesn't park in her attorney spot that's right next to ours, but somebody parks there anyway. So I was wondering if, being the fact that she loves her spot way out there, if we could reach out to the cabinet and if they would like to have a reserved spot right where ours is, I would have no problem with allowing them to park there, being the fact that they're in and out all the time. They may have to go to school visits just like us. I would make that recommendation towards the other cabinet members that we could do that. And I didn't know if the board liked that idea and would ask Dane to do that, too.
Thank you. I don't think that's actually a purview of the board or the assigning of parking spaces. That's probably Dr. Blackburn's from the facility side. And certainly, if he finds that that's necessary, he can have us park anywhere he wants, actually. It's his parking lot. Mr. Chair, if I may, the whole, obviously, the point of having those flip-up signs is when we have board meetings that when we come in and the parking lot's full, that we have a convenient place to park without having to, and unfortunately, sometimes we show up like five minutes before a meeting if we have to cruise around and look for a spot. Other than that reason, I don't see that anybody specifically needs assigned spots. We certainly don't. Typically, those signs are flipped up after a meeting, and there's only their visitor spots, not board member spots. So it's not like we really even have spots other than on meeting days. So I don't really care how it works. I just wanted to clarify that even we really don't have spots.
I would agree. Does anybody else have any other? All right.
Next one is, is that one of the things that we had was that twenty-one thousand dollar check that we talked about for school-initiated projects and stuff like that. One of the items that I had down for my capital projects was to cover all EKG tests for our soccer players and our lacrosse players and stuff for the spring. I'm highly concerned because that's the crowd and the individuals that have the highest rate. That's why Evan's friend, who he does the whole thing, passed away as a soccer player. Mr. Seeley, who lost the son at Delora, played lacrosse. Like, there's a bunch of them that we might be able to catch because going forward, if you look at past history, these are the individuals that seem to be coming up inside of our statistics. So what I would like to see as part of the board is, would you guys be interested in possibly making the EKG testing as part of the funding ideas for the school-initiated funds that are coming from that twenty-one thousand dollars? Health First just expanded and donated twenty grand as opposed to just ten to our district to do the EKG testing. I think it behooves us to match an industry partner to do the same for our schools. So would you guys be interested in having EKG testing for students utilized from that funding source that we had coming out of there? That's my question to the board. Twenty thousand.
There's actually a presentation, and we don't have it in front of us right now. I think it behooves us to actually socialize that, and you could look at that on your own and start formulating some opinions. It's something that we would obviously have to vote on. So I would suggest that I will be in touch with Evan and make sure that he sends that out to each of you so that he understands, you understand what his proposal is and his timeline as well.
So I'm hearing that Evan would give us a proposal. We would then put it to a board workshop, then at that board.
He has given us a proposal already, so we need to get that information out.
Is that for this year or is that for next year?
It's for next year.
Okay. So is there a way to ask him for a proposal for this year?
We certainly can ask him.
And then we can possibly put it on a board workshop through January?
I think there's a lot more information there than what you're stating. There's a lot more that has already been done and a lot more that has already happened than I think you're, than you're stating. And so I think to make that jump when we're just sitting right here is probably just a little bit ahead.
No, I wouldn't expect us to. I just wanted to start the conversation.
I think we need to get the, we need to get the information out so the board members can have a, have a look at it.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that that gets to you.
And then there's just, the last piece is the middle school information piece. There's a lot of things Dr. Blackburn asked me, said, hey, Matt, would you make these things available, statistics on, you know, six, large sixth grade, elementary schools, achievement levels dropping, all these other things? So I wanted to be able to not only give that to Dr. Blackburn, but then also post them somewhere so that other people may be able to do that. Would it be okay for me to give that to Dr. Blackburn and then give that also to the attendance boundary committee to, for review?
Ms. Enval?
I'm sorry.
Can you restate that question, Mr. Susan, because it is a legal question.
I'm sorry.
Based on a standing committee.
I was, I was squirreling.
We have a bunch of studies that are out there.
Right, right.
And I would like to make them available for individuals. Where would I go ahead and do that? Would I just email the committee?
Available on, like on website?
Dealing with property values on, on all kinds of different aspects.
I, I think a lot of those are available on our facilities page.
So I would send them to facilities to post on their page?
I, go ahead.
I would say no, because that's not necessarily the consensus of the board of the district, just because one of us wants to post some information. I think one of us has the right to share information with anybody we want to share information with, stating that this is of, say, of my opinion or information I have found that I am sharing. So I think we just got to be careful on how that information is represented. If it's something this board directs to be posted, then that's another story. But just because one of us feels it's important information to carry the day, that doesn't, I don't think.
So you're saying email the board?
Share the information.
And share it with my representative on the committee for discussion, possibly, if they need to, something like that.
That's fine. I mean, you could share information with anybody you want. You can send it out to the whole world, any way you want.
Look, I don't want that. I just want to know where the placeholder needs to be for the information.
Yeah, but I wouldn't put it on the, on the website unless it was something we felt we needed to hang our hat on.
You're exactly right. And the, you know, the, if you're talking about that, from my recollection, the sixth grade, you know, switching sixth grade over is part of the longer-term discussion, not something that this committee is actually even going to consider, discuss, or talk about, because we pushed off that decision until we get a bigger picture of how that sixth grade process might look, the cost, the return investment, all that type of stuff.
Send it to you guys, wait until those conversations start in a workshop and provide them that.
Right.
Good. Just needed to know where to put it.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's it.
Are you, you good there, Mr. Susan?
I'm done.
All right. Dr. Blackburn, do you have?
I've got a lot of stuff to talk about.
Do you have anything, Dr. Blackburn? Is there any other business? Hearing none, this meeting's now adjourned.